This hour we call the Work Session of Coffee County Elementary Education. We will receive things that will be ordered. I ask Mr. Mobley to give us an indication, please.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, this is great. Dear Lord, thank you for letting us and blessing us and thank you for the opportunity to stand before the board and reach out to you, Lord, for guidance and wisdom as we make decisions for our children and our community, Lord. I just thank you for the score that we're willing to serve and to serve selflessly, Lord. I would just ask you to bless our time tonight and make our efforts squeeze into you, Lord, and help us use wisdom and judgment. Amen.
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 All right, if you guys have a copy of the agenda, any questions? Any motion to stop the agenda?
What's up, man?
Mr. Johnson, Mr. Wade, I will play them. School update. Mr. Chance.
Good evening, how are y'all?
Good.
Good to be here before you might be able to present and tell you about the good things that are happening over Indian Creek. Give you just a little snapshot of what we had to occur so far this year. So, our team this year is aiming for the start. Students always strive for excellence in everything that they do and aim as high as they can to achieve those goals. And I don't know if you guys noticed, but we're going into year twenty-five at Indian Creek Elementary, so we're going to be celebrating that twenty-fifth year anniversary and I hope to have some big things in the spring to be able to celebrate that, have some formal staff back in, hopefully have a nice little ceremony to celebrate that twenty-fifth year of excellence there up in and above at Indian Creek.
Now, that will make us all feel a little bit...
Every one of us.
So, time gets by very quickly to realize how fast we're moving, so we're excited about that and look forward to what we can do to celebrate that as we continue on this school year. We'll capture kids' hearts, certainly excited and be proud of what we've been able to do in that, the changes we've been able to have. Yesterday, we did have our capturing kids' hearts traction business, able to meet with our huddle coach and move through and get some more guidance and correction and help and resources to make sure that we're doing the best that we can in that area with capturing kids' hearts and sort of focus on that. Character word is self-direct. Hopefully, it goes along with that is think, choose, and act. And so, as we teach our students and we guide them and give them direction in what they do, our three core values, we think that falls in line with that very clearly. A think falling in with treat others right, choose with making smart decisions, and then act by maximizing their potential. So, we want to teach them to build a guide in that direction on their own and learn those things and make those choices that they should in each and every asset of their life, not just there at school, within every place that they go, and become the citizens that we need for Coffee County. Each month with that, we celebrate our character kids through our fly assemblies and recognizing those students that exemplified that character trait for that month, that have gone above and beyond. And so, we call those students up, they get certificates and a little prize, and we talk about that word a little bit further, of what it means and how they've been able to put that word into action that month and what they've been able to do with it. Well, back with the fly kids, we also do our fly time. And we do that once a month. We take thirty minutes on the first Friday of each month to focus specifically on that character word for that month. So, our whole school pauses, our students and teachers build relationships during that time. So, the teachers aren't just with their homerooms. We switch up and rotate the entire school to where we're able to build relationships, not just with their homeroom teacher, but with other staff throughout the building. So, hopefully, they have someone that they glad they can talk to when they have needs. So, we spend that time to focus further on that and build those relationships and help our students be all they can be in those areas. With our positive officer referrals, continue to focus on kids making the right choices as they learn to self-direct and go in the right direction and make those right choices and let those students be recognized, not just in the office for consequences or things that they may need some redirection on without them being able to do it themselves. So, we want to recognize them. The teachers fill out these positive officer referrals and we bring them up, we celebrate them. We've made that office be not just for consequences, but also for celebrations and gives the teachers a chance to really build that confidence and that child that maybe wasn't doing a good job of self-directing, but after that, we want to recognize that, hey, you made a good choice, you moved in the right direction and doing the right things. One day, when we were having our initial capturing kids' hearts training with our champions process, we had students that would come by and one of them came out of line to talk to me and I bent down talking with him and he said, "Mr. Chance," and he thought I would say, "Logan is, he's doing a much better day and making a good choice and I just wanted you to know that." And this was a first rate, so I thought that was a good job as they're learning to not only self-direct themselves, but to brag on their peers and let others know that that's what was going on. So, that really stood out to me that he was really proud of his classmates and wanted to brag on what he was doing. So, I think that's been a great effect of the time we're spending with them and the things that we're trying to put for them as examples of what they should do. I always want to brag on this when I get a chance, our partnership with South Georgia State College. We currently have three student interns there at Indian Creek in this fall semester. They've been working in kindergarten and fourth grade and we'll possibly have student teachers in the spring. But this is a valuable asset to us to be able to bring those student interns into our school for us to see the things that they're able to do as future candidates for teaching positions. So, that gives us an insight to them and what they're able to do and accomplish. It also gives us a chance to influence them, to help guide them in the right direction of what school's going to be like and the expectations and things that they may see when they come into the school as an actual teacher. And then, also, it's pretty beneficial as well from South Georgia State College to have that opportunity to put them in our school right here in Coffee County. So, that's just an excellent program. I love often any time that they ask, do we have space to put them in to what we're doing and we're starting to jump in and say, yes, and want to put them right in the know of what we're doing within our school system. Some celebrations that we have this year, some fun days. We're grinding every day, we're aiming for the stars and trying to hit those goals. We also want to have some fun and have a chance for kids to be kids and enjoy themselves. So, we've celebrated the fiftieth day at school, students dressed in the fifties attire. And then, of course, the Trojan visit, that's always a great day and lots of excitement for our students to be able to see those Trojans and to celebrate them. During pre-K week, our students had a great time as they went out to perform our art center. So, very thankful that we have that, we have the opportunity for students to go in and to see those plays and present. So, our pre-K students really enjoyed that. Had a parade during pre-K week and our students created lots of props and had a lot of pieces and posters that they marched around, where we get our parents out for them to see this parade and get involved with us as well and have lots of celebrations. Given that week as well, guests were here just coming in and spending time with our pre-K students, reading with them, continue to build those relationships there. Our family nights that we've had that align with our school approval plan and the needs that we see from parents as they answer our surveys. So, our first one was our back-to-school bash and parents came in and heard from teachers and staff members on what the needs were going to be for that getting into school and what was going to be expected to start school. And they met in classrooms and they came down to the gym, we had our slide blown up and we had our water tank, I jumped into that. And for some reason, there was a really long line and a really large crowd to see that, but I didn't mind it. That was coming from our ninth grade, Earl County football game was really hot that afternoon, so I was really looking forward to jumping into the dunking boots. So, that was a great night and a great chance to build relationships at the very beginning of school with our students and make connections with our parents. Our next family night was our literacy night. So, again, parents and students went down to their classrooms to find out further information about literacy and the things that they could do, some strategies that they could have at home to work with their students and to provide guidance for them in the areas that they need. And then, came down to the lunchroom. We had bingo for books. Everybody loves a good game of bingo, so that was a big, big hit. They were excited when we went through mini rounds of bingo and they were able to win books from that bingo prize. And of course, everybody went away at the end of the night. They got to choose books off of the table and go home with those. So, that was a fun night as well and another great night to connect with parents. Our birthday celebrations, this is an idea that we've had in the past and brought over and implemented in Indian Creek. So, just thinking about kids, you know, celebrate, have birthdays, have birthday parties. They might always be celebrated. A lot of them don't get to have a birthday party at school. They may not have anybody that comes to do that. So, we gather once a month to celebrate all the birthdays for that month when those students come in. We have cupcakes and juices and we sing happy birthday. And it's just a really big time. We have kids ask us all the time, you know, when do they get to go into the lunchroom for birthday celebrations? I said, "When is your birthday?" They said, "Well, we'll see you then." So, some of them are still several months away, five or six months away, and they don't want to wait. So, that's a great time, too, to celebrate our kids and to make them feel good and to know that they're valued and that that's a safe space for them. And hopefully, we begin to see the benefits of doing those things with our students, that they have that motivation, that they're cared for, that they're looked after, and that they've worked really hard to achieve the goals that we're shooting for this year. Our trunk or tree event, we had this on Halloween. This was a huge day for us, parent involvement, community involvement, community members, our students and staff, everybody dressed up. Just again, we grind on goals and work and curriculum each and every day. It's very, very important, but to take time out and have some fun. And this is good relationship building time and just a good time for students to enjoy school. So, they dressed out, went out around our bus track and got tons and tons of candy. The outpouring of that and our parents was just great, sending in candy and partnering with us. I think we had around thirty-seven trunks that parents and community members came in and set up. And they, you could tell they enjoyed that just as much as the kids did, getting involved and being able to do that, just to have a great day with each other at school and celebrating. These are just some further pictures here. We have a top rider, a complicated school systems police officer. They came out and set up the trunk and provided that for our students. At the top left there, we've got our prince and princesses. Now, I got called a lot of things that day besides prince. I had to tell them, I got called delhaud, airplane pilot, captain crunch. It's like, well, I didn't realize I was getting such a versatile costume. But a fun day. Our staff even enjoyed that, having the opportunity to be able to dress up and have some fun. Our students, be able to see them in a different light. If they can have fun, they can join in with them and celebrate. I think this is probably our best day that we've had for us to be able to give back. So, on Veterans Day, we had our program. We had our veterans come in. We had all of our students come in and set up in the gym. We had our veterans come in in line and celebrated them, cheered them on for a bit while. And we had a ceremony there at the gym. We're thankful we can go and look to the next page for our NJRTC candidates to come out and provide opening ceremonies for us. We had a few short things there in the gym, presentation. And then, we moved out again to our track. We had a parade, did something a little bit different this year. So, our teachers, our students did a great, great job of props and providing things to celebrate our veterans. And we had a special place for them set up outside. Our students circled around and did some things for them, just thanked them and looked on them for their service to our country and showed them lots and lots of gratitude. Bottom right there, our Walk of Heroes, we were asking our family members, our parents, if they would send in any veterans that we have within our school that we'd be celebrating. So, up front in the school with the foyer, we're able to put those up, those pictures in the areas of service that they were in to celebrate them and to honor the Indian Creek family members as it's seen in family. And that just finishes out with our parade and props that our students have. Some of them you can see there bottom left, he's got, they made a tent, had some carpool boxes. Very, very creative in what they did. Just a great day for our students to be able to give back and show gratitude to our veterans. Very thankful for what you guys do. I appreciate your support and all the work that you do for our system. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, Lord. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, now we have Mr. Lee Mobley is going to provide the board an update on capturing kids' hearts.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. I appreciate you guys giving us, and Mr. Lee also giving us an opportunity to come up and just give you a quick update. I won't take a lot of your time, but if you'll, thank you, Logan. Thinking back to our first conversation about capturing kids' hearts, we asked the board to take a big step and support us in pushing this initiative. And all of you came on board unanimously to push forward with this. And I just wanted to give you an update. I think things are going well, but Mr. Chance and his pic snapshot of capturing kids' hearts in this building, I think speaks in tons for capturing kids' hearts in action, what does it look like for our kids. But I do want to share a little bit of data to see how things are going. Just to give you a timeline, a reminder, twenty-two, twenty-three, we trained our principals, directors, and lead teacher from each school in Atlanta. We came back to you guys and we agreed to push this program out, or this initiative out. So, in twenty-three, we trained all of our instructional staff certified and classified in August. In October, we had a process champions visit at each school. And we had our huddle coaches, our consultants come in to work with each school and develop their teams custom to fit their school, their needs. And then, in November, actually, this week, we had our next visit, which was a traction visit at each school. And it was essentially to regain traction if our schools had lost traction or to keep traction if they're moving forward. In addition, Mr. Chance, you mentioned the huddle coaches and the huddle meetings. The capturing kids' hearts team hold monthly meetings where our principals go in, they get tips and tricks, updates, or new data to try to keep them moving forward with this process and not let it grow stale. The next slide is kind of a five-pronged approach to capturing kids' hearts. And the team says with that appropriate implementation that capturing kids' hearts will increase student achievement, decrease discipline referrals, increase attendance rates, increase graduation rates, and increase teacher satisfaction. So, I'm going to hit a few of those real quick with the data we have at this point in the year. Concerning teacher satisfaction, we have a mid-year survey that the capturing kids' hearts team have put together. And we have quite a number of teachers who have completed that, it's something through December. But it's on a five-point scale and you can see these are five of the questions that our teachers were asked. And you see the response, all of which are over four. And basically, they feel that they belong, they're comfortable in their space, they enjoy working on their campus, and they say their culture is relational at their school. Also, the leading measure for teacher satisfaction is attendance. And we currently have a four percent decrease in teacher absenteeism. And four percent sounds small, but when you, when you look at school business, any increase is great. And we're very thankful for that, for the decrease in absenteeism. And that's data as of today. The next screenshot around discipline referrals, we currently have an eleven percent decrease in total discipline referrals and a twelve percent in bus referrals. And student attendance rates were ten percent up at this point in the year, students who have been out of school. And again, there's a lot of things in place that affect attendance and satisfaction, but we just feel that this is playing a part in making a difference. The next slide, and these are hard to see, our students were surveyed also. And you can see, again, on a five-point scale, these are all questions of students about how they feel about their school. And as you can see, this, our numbers are great. I mean, we're over four percent in almost every category with just a couple of exceptions. And even if you were at a three-point seven, three-point out, I think those are great results expressing how students feel about school, if they're comfortable, are they satisfied. And I can get you guys paper copies of all this data once we get our report finalized. The next thing, one of the components that was not missing necessarily for capturing kids' hearts, but really wanting concrete was how we celebrate one another. And Mr. Chance's illustration of little Logan celebrating his classmate. Our teachers do that within buildings regularly, but we want to provide them with a very formal way. And Dr. Lee's came across this highlight program. This is just a screenshot of my screen with, it has a rolling feed of highlights where all of our staff district-wide can sing praise out for their coworkers, whether they're at their school or across the district. And I will say this, this was not intentional. This was, this afternoon, I just screenshot it just so happens, I believe I've got one right there at the top. But there's several others. And I just wanted to share, we've had, this has been rolled out one month as of yesterday, and our teachers and faculty and staff have sent out almost seventeen thousand brags to one another. So, it's pretty exciting to see the great things going on in schools. And this is authentic feedback. I mean, this is not for anybody but to lift one another up. So, this is a piece we added to complement capturing kids' hearts. And then, finally, Mr. Flippin that came out and joined us, I think Mr. Lee always best friend that day. You know, his quote, I think, that catches it all was, "If you have a child's heart, you'll have their mind." And I think our teachers are making great efforts to capture these children's hearts so that they'll work hard, they'll feel loved, feel valued, again, a safe place in their schools, a place of belonging. And we appreciate you, you board members and your support for the program. We hope this continues. And we hope it becomes just what we do, not because it's a process or a program, it's just who we are. Any questions about capturing kids' hearts or concerns? Anything we can do better?
Do the teachers do not shout outs to the children?
Yes, ma'am. They do that. We don't have that within this platform. This is an adult platform, but within the schools, and Mr. Chance could probably speak to it. A lot of our teachers have brag boards in their classroom, outside their classroom, where kids get different praises. I know that the few of you are...
You have a version that would be the positive officer referrals.
Yeah, the positive officer referrals. So, yes, ma'am, we're looking for the great things and we're hoping that outweighs the negative and we start having our kids pushed to the positive, that positive pressure. And again, thank you so much for supporting our teachers and their efforts to make their classroom great.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mobley. Our next item is the minutes from our last month's meeting. Take a moment to review those. If it pleases the board, we'll place that on the consent agenda for the regular meeting. Next item is financial report. We have Ms. Bradford here to present the financials. You want to walk through those documents?
Yes, sir. The first document here is our monthly financial through October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. And it shows where we began our fiscal year in July with a fund balance of twenty-eight million, eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars and thirty-two cents. So, as of October thirty-one, our end of month fund equity is at twenty-five million, one hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars and seven cents. Our next report is our comparison that compares the four years. And you can see our fund equity as of the month of October as compared to the month of September. It has dropped, but we should be, you know, seeing an increase in the months of November and December as our tax revenue picks up. We will be receiving our first revenue probably next week. This report here is our year-to-date report. It has, the first part contains our revenues. So, as of October, our total revenues received are fourteen million, seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars and twenty cents. And our expenditures as of October are eighteen million, four hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-nine cents. Next report is our SPOS revenue as of, let's see, the month of October, was seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars and nineteen cents. So, we've got an increase from the previous month and also from the last year at the same time. There's an increase. Questions or thoughts?
I would take this time to thank our community for approving the East PLOS that was on the ballot last week. And it was overwhelmingly approved by voters, I think an approval rate of around seventy-six percent, which is really strong when it comes to an election. And so, just want to thank our community for continuing to support our school system and the East PLOS. Now, this document is a compliance document that Ms. Bradford will submit to the paper and they will run this report in the paper. And we have to do this each year. And so, it documents the East PLOS since conception, is what it does. So... All right. There's no questions. We'll place those items on the consent agenda for the regular month for me. Chromebook purchase for Coffee Middle School. Our principal couldn't be here tonight. We had a conflict, but this purchase is for Chromebooks for Coffee Middle School. And this is being funded through the L4 Georgia grant. And these Chromebooks will be used for literacy purposes at the middle school. So, you'll see the purchase of thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty cents of Chromebooks. We'll place that on the consent agenda for the regular meeting. The next item is safety department purchase. We have discussed some equipment from ADAPT to SOL. And this equipment has been approved by the State Department in using Acer funding. And this is safety equipment that will help us screen people that come into our buildings. So, we're not going to ask for approval tonight since it is three hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty-four cents. I thought we'd present that tonight to the board. If you have any questions, we can answer them over the next couple of weeks and then come back at the end of the board meeting and ask for approval. The next item is the CTAE technology purchase.
Good evening. On the agenda, you'll see where we are looking at purchasing computers to read or upgrade. Two of our labs, last year, we were able to upgrade some labs. And this year, this will complete all of our labs at our middle school and our high school. We have two left to do. And this is part of our goals with our comprehensive local needs assessment. And the funds that we'll use are Perkins Grant funds that we received from the government this year. And that was, we've allocated for that if that means y'all's approval tonight. Any questions?
I'm just curious, are these are desktop users?
Yes, this is our, we've got the two main labs at the middle school that we did one last semester. And this will take care of our second one there. And then, at the high school, we were able to do three and take some, one of our engineering classes has to have a better one to run, I don't know, the technological terms, but with all the graphics that pertains to that. So, we were able to use those and move them to one of our other rooms. So, we were able to upgrade two of our main labs at the high school, the brand new ones, to be able to run the graphics they need for graphic designs and with the engineering software that they use with CAD software. Complete all of our labs now. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is surplus property. We have a number of buses here. You'll see them listed, two thousand and eight, two two thousand and threes, and two two thousand and fours that have been used up. We scavenged parts off of them, got about all we can get out of them. And Transportation Board is asking for these to be surplus. Any questions? If no questions, you'll place it down on the consent agenda. The next item is our meeting dates. We have potential dates here for next year, two thousand twenty-four. And we are presenting these tonight. So, once again, as in that purchase that I described earlier, you'll have the next couple of weeks to study this and make sure we're good with these dates before we come back and approve them at the December meeting. So... Any questions about that? All right. And last, we have the Georgia High School Association pass. As you all know, we are eleven and oh in football. And, you know, I don't want to get ahead... As you all know, we are eleven and O in football and, and, you know, I don't want to get ahead of myself, but, uh, maybe this role will continue and, uh, wanted to make sure board members that you, um, have been kind of educated on the pass that the GHSA uses now. They used to use the little cards that you were issued that looked like a driver's license and they, they quit doing that about two years ago and then went to this electronic format that's called Dragonfly and you have to download the app and get the ID approved through GHSA. And so I thought with the playoffs approaching and me and you rode together in Atlanta to a playoff game-
I wanted it anyway.
I was excited.
I know.
But, uh, if we do get a chance to go to another game in Atlanta like that, then I want to make sure y'all have been explained how you can get these passes. So we've got Mr. Uh, Brady Hart here tonight to just tell us a little bit about the passes and then once we break from here, if y'all need some assistance, he and Logan will be here to help y'all, uh, set those passes up.
Hey, Mr. Mobley, I'm going to another town, just time they dragged by masks. As Dr. Lee's mentioned, uh, here in the last couple of years, uh, the, the high school passes that went to a digital platform is kind of rare and I guess it's headed that on the digital side. Uh, so myself, I'll take care of all the passes for all of our high school coaches, uh, high school administration, also board members. There's a, there's a page on the Georgia High School Association, uh, website where all the board members, um, and board, uh, members at the state board office get a free pass. Uh, and so we kind of go to the website, Mr. Evans. What you do is, uh, so once you get to the Dragonfly, um, uh, website, you'll go to sign up for free, you can get that. And then what you do, you put your first name, last name, email address and password. Once we get past this first phase and then, uh, you'll be logged into the account. After that, uh, you'll have to answer some questions, you have to take a, a headshot photo, uh, and also you will have to put your email address and then hit, um, uh, get my card. Uh, for you all, it'll, instead of hitting, uh, select school staff pass, you'll get school system pass. And once you go through the process, it'll take about a couple of minutes. I know Dr. Lee's is chief of, uh, uh, Mr. Mobley have theirs as well, it'll take a couple of minutes to do. And once you hit submit, get my pass, Sherry Uvain's from the Georgia High School Association should, we don't want to approve that pass and again, we want to just make sure that, uh, that's accessible for everyone, because again, so like Dr. Lee, I don't want to get ahead of myself as well, but, you know, it's, it's looking pretty good this year, um, especially with Jones kind of coming out tomorrow to get passes for first, of course, but, uh, some good game tomorrow. But again, we want to make sure that all the board members and everyone in the board office have that access to the pass. And once you do receive it, you can go to any game in the state of Georgia, uh, GHSA or BU plus one, get a game for free in competition. So I want to just, uh, put it out before you guys, if you want, and stay around today or come to the athletic conference, I'm happy to help out with that as well. I do want to just offer that to you guys and I'm happy to be here. I appreciate all y'all do for the athletic conference, so thank y'all.
Thank you. And, and it's, what we can do is I thought we could break when we get ready to go to executive session, uh, we can pause for a few minutes if y'all want to and you can log into this Dragonfly website and see if you can set it up and then, uh, maybe we take ten minutes to do that and then we could go to executive, then we report to executive session, uh, while Brady's here and we've got Logan here that maybe could help you if you needed to, but so forth. So I want to give y'all that opportunity here tonight while we got some technical help. But that's all I have to this time. I would ask for an executive session to discuss personnel and the hiring and employment evaluation of employees as well as the salaries and, uh, of employees and, uh, property or real estate, we'll discuss that with the board and, uh, those are the items that we discussed before. Executive session. Your most, Wade?
Second.
Rest in all favor. I'm real pause for about here. Pushing bags in executive session?
Move we had to executive session?
Fresh. Look session is adjourned, we'll start the regular meeting in a couple of minutes.